Call to order, the City Commission meeting of Tuesday, January 22, 2019. Let the records show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business? Mr. Gao.
Mr. President, there are no changes.
All right, we have no changes to the Order of Business. Anyone, any commissioners have any questions on the Order of Business? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business.
Second.
With a second. All in favor of approving the Order of Business, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. The Order of Business is approved. Consent agenda, is there any item on the consent agenda, commissioners, you wish to discuss with city staff? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
The motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda, motion carries. We have quite a few timetable items this evening, but we will jump right into our non-timetable. And first item up is public safety this evening, and we have a report from Chief Seabock. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, this evening, we're going to provide you the 2018 Annual Risk Management Report, our Safety Report, for the City of Dickinson. Again, I want to stress that this is not the fire department safety report, this is the city safety report. So in 2018, we saw 48 employee injuries. 16 of those required medical attention, 22 did not. 10 were incidents of property damage. Pickup truck maybe hit a post or something like that, that's the kind of property damage recorded there. We had four safety concern reports that we addressed, two injured citizens, and one near miss. Overall, that's a 4% decrease of overall incidents compared to 2017. However, our incidents that did require medical attention did increase. I want to also state that I'm showing you just a brief synopsis of the report through this presentation. You should have the report in its entirety in your information. Again, we qualified for premium discounts off of our insurance premium. Our safety management program, the basic program, which is consisting of the hazard recognition, accident investigation, and safety training components, was successful for a 10% decrease in premium. Our safety action menu items, the drug-free workplace, learning management, return to work, designated medical provider program, all three of those are worth a 5%. However, there was only one that we qualified for, that was the drug-free workplace program. The learning management system and the return to work designated medical provider program are components that we will continue to work on in the coming year. Again, the chart will show you from 2013 through 17 what we've saved in premium discount. And although that's important, that's hard dollars, that's, the program saved the city, what's really important, and you've heard me say this before, the aspect of not hurting an employee and sending our employees home at the end of the day healthy and whole is the true benefit of what we're doing. No, I'm not running for office, I just thought I'd say that. Going forward, the City of Dickinson Safety Committee created the vehicle accident information card. It's a quick reference for employees that give them a procedure to follow if they are driving a city vehicle and they're involved in an incident. City of Dickinson, as you well know, approved the hiring of a risk management specialist in 2019. And as we said here, in respect to that position, we have not set any 2019 safety goals until we get that person hired and get them onboard and have a chance to discuss with them their vision of how this program will go. Again, the complete audit report is located in the City of Dickinson Public Drive for all employees to view under the City Safety Program folder. And that's the end of the report. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Seabock? I guess I have a few, Chief.
Okay.
When looking at the breakdown, the highest reported were falls, if I'm correct?
Right, yes.
Is that something that we're looking at specifically?
Actually, it was one of our, one of our safety goals was to reduce that number. It slips, trips, falls, slips on the ice, things like that, slips off of equipment, icy weather, things like that, continue to be one of our leading areas.
Can it be attributed more to weather, or is it just, like you said, falling off of vehicles?
Generally, I would say 90, 95% of those are contributed to weather conditions.
Okay. And then the sprains and strains were the next highest category?
Sprains and strains, again, are one of our leading ones year after year. Lifting techniques, a lot of times a sprain or a strain resulting from a fall. Sometimes they work together. One of the interesting charts that I wanted to mention, I'm not sure where you'll find it, we receive a very thorough report from workforce safety, it's called their dashboard. And I believe we gave you, if not all of it, considerable amounts of that dashboard report. And one of the breakdowns is injuries by age group, which I think is kind of interesting because even though we may have an older than average age group, it's, if I'm not mistaken, if you found it, I think I'm right in saying 39 to, what, 49 is, or 30-something to 40-something?
Forty to 49.
Pardon me, sir?
Forty to 49.
Forty was our leading group?
Yep.
Thirty to 39?
Yeah.
No, it's 50, isn't it?
Total.
Over the six years, you had 30 and 40, 49.
Interesting chart, it was one that we thought was kind of unique for workforce safety to track and share with us, so.
We need to hire more 70-plus-years-old, we only have one injury there.
That's right. We're either moving too, notice I said we, we're either moving too slow to fall down.
Was that you?
No, sir, no. Not yet, but I can see it from here.
And then we're, our third category was bites and stings.
Mm-hmm.
And we're making sure that the, all the departments are, that's something we really can't, like bee stings and stuff, control, but?
No, but a lot of those were related to the animal shelter, we've provided through the safety budget, we've provided bite gloves, we've provided the long poles for animal control and things like that. And so that was kind of a work in progress. We tried to fill in the gaps of equipment they didn't have and/or worked with them to provide training of equipment they did have, so.
And then I guess my last question or comment, working, working this program, as you have for, what, three years now? Four?
As the city safety coordinator, I've got probably 25 years of doing this.
But being like primary, like the designee was only the last few years?
No, no.
Or has been for more than that?
It's, yeah, I was, I was appointed the city safety coordinator when I was a captain.
Okay.
Which is, you know, a lifetime ago.
So that person coming into his new position that's applying, and this is just for the public, because this job position's open till the 31st of this month.
Mm-hmm.
The expectations that we're coming in, we have some, I guess, set expectations, but we also are looking for somebody that can look, as being new to the organization, and look at new procedures or different things to improve our safety.
Absolutely, Mayor, there's, I think we're looking for someone that doesn't have to recreate a program, but absolutely has, has an ability to craft a program to maybe a different vision.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, there's, I, it should be an exciting opportunity, I surely hope our candidates will think it is.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Just one, chief of the top, looking at a report here, the top five body parts, two of the five involve the ring and the little finger. Does that pertain to the street department more than?
That actually was an amputation event.
Right, but was a result of street department equipment?
It was refuse department.
Street department.
And it was equipment-related, yes, but not powered equipment.
An amputation of a finger with poor comp is, what, minimum $10,000, like?
Off the top of my head, I can't say, but yeah, there was, there was some serious dollars attached.
So is that something that we should be looking at, that all mechanics, people working on the heavy equipment should not have?
It wasn't related to any, you know, a ring or anything like that, it was, it was related to hand position on a roll-off container.
Okay.
As something was being loaded, what, the process inadvertently caused the gate to swing in a direction that came against the roll-off container body, where the employee had their hand over the top. And so I believe that that's, that's been addressed by marking containers and awareness.
Yeah, it's like farmers, you know, 97 don't wear rings, the other 10% don't have fingers.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to engineering, and we have a couple of reports, and that'll be handled by Assistant City Engineer Marshick.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. We have some board openings that we would like to bring forward, just to get it out there, to see if there's anybody in the public that would be interested in joining these boards. The first one I'd like to mention is the Energy Advisory Committee. What this committee does is review applications made by companies seeking to drill oil wells anywhere within the city limits or the ETZ. And this committee would be reviewing those applications, and we're looking for industry representatives or the general public to come forward and help us with those reviews.
And Mrs. Marshick, does that committee only meet when there's an application?
That is correct.
Okay.
Number two is a Special Assessment Commission. This is a five-member board. This board also meets when the city proposes to add a new special assessment district or annually to hear objections to the level of assessment assigned to a particular property. Otherwise, they do not convene. So anybody that has interest, we would sure like to have them.
So their meetings are just based upon the need of application, applicant?
Correct.
Okay. And there, how many openings are on each board?
We have multiple openings on each board.
So the public that's watching, or the public here, apply to these positions, they're very important, and who knows what it might lead to?
One more thing is that those applications are available on our city website, or you can contact somebody at the city and they sure can help you get that application.
Is it on Channel 19? Coming up through Channel 19 that we have openings on these boards?
I believe it is, but I'm not sure if that's been, I know the requests have been made about that.
Any other questions for Mrs. Marshick? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into planning, and we have a special use permit, Communication Tower. Planning Director Hadley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the first item is Communications Tower 4141, 15th Street West. It's actually the second application, the first one was approved in 2015, and the approval expired, so it had to go through the process again, there wasn't any negative comments on this, and the planning commission would recommend approval.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hadley on this special use permit? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion. And this is resolution, should be O2-2019, if I'm correct? So I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion to approve O2-2019.
Second.
We have a second. Any further questions or comments on this resolution, the special use permit? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a planning and zoning project update by Planner Josephson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, City Commissioners, good evening. Steve Josephson, just here to give you a quick update on some projects that planning and zoning is working on. One of them was a proposed, a proposed overlay district just south of Dickinson State University. It would have allowed for, for limited commercial uses in that area. Planning and zoning director Hadley and I had organized a meeting of property owners and interested people in the area, was held recently. This proposal was not met with much enthusiasm, to put it, you know, was not met with much enthusiasm, was met with, with, you know, public opposition. So at this time, this is something that we're not going to, not going to go forward with, it seemed the property owners in the area weren't, weren't, you know, weren't, weren't interested in it. One of the projects we have coming up has been working with public, with engineering on updates to Chapter 34, that's the subdivision of land section of the, of the code, and are hoping to bring something to planning and zoning for review, review in the near future. The existing Renaissance Zone is, is set to expire at the end of June, or June of this year. The state does allow for a five-year, five-year extension, and that's something that should be coming to planning and zoning and then to, then to city commission within the next couple of months. And then the last thing we're undertaking, one thing we're undertaking is an overall comprehensive review of the, of Chapter 39, which is the zoning code, looking at it to update things in there, make it, make it real, and the flow be a little more eas, easy, you know, make some changes so that, that, try to bring it up to, up to date. And just wanted to update you on those projects, and if you have any, see if you have any questions.
Any question for Mr. Josephson on the project updates, or what happened with the overlay conversation? I guess, if no one has any questions, there's comments, Mr. Gao and I were in attendance. And the one thing that I think is, is very important for the public is, the meeting itself, I would say, took a turn immediately, there was suspicion that we were trying to either lock people's property values, or, or as a city, or try to do something in their district that they did not want. And the whole thing was a listening session to find out if, if this was indeed something they, they did want. And I would just say to the general public, when you, when you come to meetings like that, come to meetings with proper information, and not just what you're hearing at your coffee group or in rumor, because there was a lot there that, there was suspicion that we were trying to do something to get them out of their homes. And we weren't. The whole intent was to provide an opportunity if that was something they wanted. And they obviously did not want it. So we're not going to pursue it any longer.
And it could have been a good thing for some of them, someone with older homes that would never get what they think it's worth, but someone coming in with a business return, limited commercial, would pay more.
And, and, and Mr. Hadley did an excellent job of trying to diffuse some of the tension that was going on in the room. And, and he did also, as the meeting went along, he proposed, well, what would you think of if somebody opened up a professional service, like a lawyer or chiropractor or something in one of these older homes? And they seemed to be open to that idea generally, but most of them thought that what was going to happen beside Dickinson State is what happened beside NDSU, when you had a whole block knocked down, and there's going to be a strip mall there. And I don't think that was the original intent ever by anyone. And so, it wasn't all negative, there was a few people there that did view it as opportunity, but I would say overall, there was, there was not a whole lot of support for us to pursue that. So the one thing that we are going to do when Mr. Josephson does his update on the Renaissance Zone, is we're going to move some of those Renaissance Zone blocks up and down Villard, to give the business owners opportunities along Villard to pursue the, their renovations through the Renaissance Zone.
Yeah, the comment I would add, it was interesting, we had the meeting at the President's Forum, and, you know, among the faculty and staff and those attendees, there was definitely support for this and, at this meeting. No, not so much.
Not so much.
Not so much.
So, any other questions for Mr. Josephson or for Mr. Hadley on any of these projects? Just to kind of get into the weeds a little bit, either chapter, is it Chapter 39, we're looking at the new, the parking?
That will be a portion of it, too.
Okay, that'll be a portion of what we have to allocate for parking for a new, or a business, or, or whatever, right?
Right, and the ability, we can get into this down the road, the ability to provide for relief from, you know, from the minimum parking standards, and this is a national trend in cities.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
We have no other reports, and our next timetable starts here in a few minutes, so we'll move on to public issues of city concern not on the agenda. If you have a public issue that was not on our agenda and it concerns the city, please come forward, state your name, and let the commission know what is your concern. Seeing no one has any issues that are not on the agenda, we'll move into commission items. And I think there's a couple items that commissioners wanted to talk about. Any commissioners want, have any issues, questions that are not on the agenda that they'd like to bring up?
Mr. President, I'll start. We discussed it just a little bit earlier. My concern is that, it still bothers me, this $300,000 that we, we gave to the Roosevelt Foundation. And I would like the board here, the commission to direct or counselor, to write a letter or an inquisition, asking them for a summary of where our $300,000 went, whether it's in a form of an audit, or whatever else we could recommend from them. But I think it's necessary that we have an idea of where our money went, and what time it went, and where they were at in their plan. I had a discussion with someone, as I mentioned, that I know the commission would not have given them the money had we known that they were going to do it and run around us and talk to people about moving it to, to Madara, that still bothers me. So I think they owe us that, that's the least they can do. Come and talk to us and let us know and hear our concerns, so. If you guys have something to add to that, I don't know if you have enough of what I'm trying to get out there.
I was going to say, Mrs. Murtha, if you, if you have any, do you have any updates since the last time you corresponded with the board?
Only that I had spoken with Mr. Sagsby from the foundation with regards to this matter, and, and they can and will provide an accounting of the $300,000 at the time, that was prior to the legislative session. And so their funding was a big question about, and I believe they were saying that there wasn't, there wasn't much, if anything, left. However, I believe this has been taken up again this legislative session, so.
Were we the only entity that gave them money?
No.
Or how much other money was there?
Well, that would be, that would be a question I have not yet asked, but can.
Yeah, I got a feeling that we're the only entity that gave $300,000.
A public entity.
Public entity, yes.
Aside from the state.
Private donations, I don't think they have any yet.
There were some private donations, it was my understanding that however the, and there was an explanation with regards to how those private donations were allocated. But yeah, we can absolutely ask for an accounting, and it will be interesting to watch how the project is funded through this legislative session.
Yeah, well, I think they was, I mean, I think it was, they didn't have any problem coming and talking to us, asking for a million dollars and then 30% of it. I think they should have the courtesy to come and tell us why, why not.
Actually, I think they asked for $3 million, and we gave 10%, but it's still $300,000 regardless of that. But I think some accounting would be appropriate. Any other comments, commissioners?
No, I agree. I think it'd be nice to see what happened to our money, so.
Just a couple of things, if commissioners are okay. One, been asked to, to go out and testify on behalf of the Highway 85 project, go out to Washington DC, that'll be coming up in April, just wanted to let you all know. This corridor project is, I think it's paramount to what we're doing in western North Dakota, and the improvement of Highway 85 is, is much needed, that corridor, that business corridor. And we also need to, we're going to have to start working with the school district here on this project that they got coming up. And I think just to gauge some of how the public feels, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, they are having a public hearing on the new high school, proposed new high school at the, at Dickinson High. And I think it would, if, if commissioners can be in attendance, I think it's important to see what the reaction is from the public.
It's at the high school, you said?
Yes, I'm almost positive it's at the high school. Yes, it'll be at the high school auditorium, 7:00 PM. With that, we will move into our timetable, and the first item up is a conditional use permit for Freedom Energy Oil Well. And Assistant City Engineer Marshick, you'll be handling this.
President Decker, Commissioners, the item in your packet and before you is our conditional use permit with Freedom Energy Oil Well. They met with our energy committee on January 9, and they made an application for drilling an oil well at 3832 112th Avenue Southwest. That well is over 1,000 feet from any residence. Typically, we ask for notification of residents within that 1,000 feet, and since there isn't anybody laying it, living in that area to contact, they did not need to follow through with that piece. And typically, the state requires 500 feet away from the nearest residence, so they definitely meet that.
You're talking about the old slot in the Panther?
Yeah, correct.
Oldman's, old slot in the Panther, huh?
That is correct.
That's south, well, southwest of, no.
So tonight.
Straight south of Dickinson.
They're looking for a public hearing and to move forward on this item.
Okay, we have, well, it's not listed as a public hearing tonight, it's just the approval of the permit, but.
My mistake, that's the next item, is a public hearing.
Okay.
On my list.
Okay, yeah. So yeah, that public hearing is of the utility easement, yes. Okay, so if, we're just looking at approving the permit for this well.
That is correct.
Any questions for Assistant City Engineer Marshick? Now I'd look for a motion on this permit.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
I have a motion to approve? With a second. Any further comment or questions? I will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mrs. Marshick, you have a public hearing next for utility easement.
That is correct, this is the public hearing we're looking for. This is a public hearing for a utility vacation. This property is located in the state addition. It was originally two lots that, in the flat, that had been combined, so it's a portion of lots 17 and a lot 18 in Block 25. So they are asking to vacate this easement that's in the middle of their now one piece of property.
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this vacation? This is Resolution 03-2019, and this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing. hearing, and if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak for or against this resolution, of this vacation of a utility easement, please come forward. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public, commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Marshick? Comments? Now I'd look for a motion on 03-2019.
Mr. President, I'll move to, we approve 0-3-2019.
A motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further comments or questions? Very none will vote, Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 03, I mean, excuse me, 03-2019.
Thank you.
I think I said it the same way as he did.
We are a little bit ahead of our timetable here, and since we need to stick to this, because it is advertised, what's up?
They might be ready, if they're ready.
They might be ready, but it is advertised at 5:05, right? So, we have to stick to that. Usually, we have a prom going over. Sit, where's Jerry at? You usually have to sit there now. But Jerry's not here tonight, so we can go back to if there are, commission, if there are any items that you wish to discuss. And I know there are some people that have come in since the last time I announced public issues of city concern, so we can open that back up, if there are any issues not on the agenda, that you maybe were coming to speak about at the end of the meeting. We opened that portion up earlier, because we were ahead of schedule, but there's no comments from commissioners, and there's no one here that has any concerns on the agenda, so we will just stay in place till 5:05, and we will continue with our timetable. According to my pocket, 5:05, so we will introduce our next guest, and that is Wendy Baumgartner in Giving Hearts. Do you have a presentation for us, or?
Um, city commissioners and Mr. President, thank you so much for allowing us to come here tonight. We, I am Emily Grant with the Best Friends Mentoring Program, and I'm representing the Southwest North Dakota Giving Hearts Day Collaborative. We are asking to make February 14th, which is Giving Hearts Day, a proclamation of, what is it?
Giving Hearts Day.
Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson. And so, we have myself from Best Friends, we have Home on the Range, Choice Medical Clinic, the monastery, St. Benedict's, and Camp Recreation. And we're here to hopefully take a group picture with you guys, and for those that don't know what Giving Hearts Day is, it's a 24-hour online giving day, and there's 13 of us organizations in the southwest North Dakota area, and this is a huge day for us to raise funds, and like I said, it's online, so people all around the world can give to us, and so we just want to raise awareness for this event, and hopefully to get everybody to participate in it, too.
I think it's a great day, and thank you all for being here, and, you know, representing your organizations, and I have a proclamation here that I'll read, and then we can get a group photo for you again, so...
Thank you.
All right, Giving Hearts Day proclamation for Dickinson, North Dakota. In observance of Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson, North Dakota, whereas in 2008, Giving Hearts Day was created by the Dakota Medical Foundation and the Impact Foundation as the first one-day virtual fundraising event of its kind in the region, and whereas the goals of Giving Hearts Day are to raise awareness of the charitable nonprofit sector and its organizations in North Dakota and western Minnesota, to assist the organizations in better telling their mission stories, to promote online giving, and to provide donors the opportunity to multiply the results of their giving. And whereas this 24-hour online fundraising event is dedicated to inspiring online donations for charities at impactgiveback.org, and I'll say that again, impactgiveback.org. And whereas, Giving Hearts Day is powerful, because it inspires so many to give for the first time, or to contribute to newly discovered charities. And whereas, the charitable nonprofit sector provides much-needed services that improve the quality of life for so many in our community. And whereas, the charitable nonprofit sector supports individuals and families with quality programs, materials, and funds that promote and encourage self-sufficiency. And whereas, all of the above-listed benefits serve to strengthen the fiber of our community and make it richer for all residents. And whereas, in order to provide these benefits, charities who provide these services need ongoing funds in order to provide long-term, sustainable services for our residents in need. And whereas, these charities have demonstrated a need for collaboration and resources, and have joined together for this one-day online fundraiser. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby declare February 14th, 2019, Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson, North Dakota, and call upon public officials, businesses, and community leaders, along with educators, to encourage all Dickinson citizens to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs, in order to recognize the charitable nonprofit sector and their staffs and volunteers, who provide essential services that improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. Acknowledge that this charitable nonprofit sector is beneficial in Dickinson, in the southwest North Dakota, because it improves life outcomes and strengthens our community. And I will go ahead and sign this with a motion from commissioners.
So moved.
A motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
Second. With a second, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ready?
Thank you, ladies, for all you do.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Could you just give us a little more information about Giving Hearts Day? If you want to participate, what's the easiest way to find out more about your organizations, and where they can go to give back besides the website?
I would love to, so we will have these postcards that we will hand out and make available to everybody. With the list of the organizations participating in Giving Hearts Day in southwest North Dakota, you will find all of our information on there as well, and then we also have some other postcards, these ones, that show you how to get involved beyond just giving, and to become a champion, a charity champion, and to recruit others to participate with you in Giving Hearts Day. And so, we will pass these out for everybody, and again, have these ones, and in Dickinson, we will have several different activities going on. JD's Barbecue will be hosting a lunch, and there'll be some other things going on throughout the community, put on by each organization. So, watch for our Facebook posts, we have Southwest North Dakota Giving Hearts Day Collaborative Facebook page, and all of our information and pictures about each organization are on there as well.
Thank you.
I think last year, they just stood behind us, pulling together here.
Please squeeze in, there we go. All right.
Don't hold upside down.
When? There you go.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
That's ours? Okay.
All right, everybody settle back in. We'll move on to our next timetable, and that is a public hearing for future land use amendments, and Planning Director Hadley will be handling this.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, two future land use amendments, both from commercial to residential, one in the Huesons, which is just east of Players, and the other, which is down by DSU. These items were both heard at our last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and there weren't any public comments at that time, the Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hadley? This is, the first one is ordinance 1666, and then we'll have 1667.
And it is the first reading, obviously, so...
Yes, it's first reading, we'll have a public hearing, so if there's anyone with any concerns on this future land use amendment, please come forward, state your concerns. Anyone from the public with any concerns on this future land use amendment? Seeing no one with any concerns, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hadley on these two properties, or these multiple properties, I should say? Now I'd look for a motion on 1666.
Mr. President, I move to approve REZ-007-18 as presented in ordinance number 1666.
A motion to approve 1666?
Second.
With a second, any further discussion or questions? Very none will vote, Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mrs. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. President, before we go on, Mr. Hadley, I see you got four of these here. Next time, could you just give us a city map highlighting where these are?
If we scoot back to, they should have, you should be in your packet, and then it should show it up there.
You guys have that in your packet?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't have a map, I'll take mine.
Should have a map that looks like that one, and then the previous one is...
Were you finding that, anybody?
I'm not.
I don't have a map, either.
Okay. We just, we, we...
Okay.
I know Mr. Frederick and I got it in Planning and Zoning, so that's...
Either in our, put it in our packet, or have it here, like, yeah, that's fine here.
Yeah, I thought we had it in there, but...
Very good, thank you.
That's what you should have had, right there.
So then, we have a, I'm looking for a motion, or further questions or comments on 1667.
Looking for a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve.
All right. We have a motion to approve 1667?
Second.
With a second, any further discussion or comments? Very none will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on 1667. Next item up, Mr. Hadley, we have a public hearing for rezoning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, these two, the next two rezonings correspond to the last two flume amendments, so the same maps would correspond, and they're going from commercial to R2 medium-density residential. Also went through the Planning Commission at the same meeting, same time, there was no public comment at that time for or against, and the Planning Commission and staff would recommend approval.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hadley on these blocks being rezoned? This is the first reading, so we'll have a public hearing, open up the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to come forward, state your name and your concerns for or against the rezones of these two blocks, or additional blocks, I should say. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on these rezones? Mr. Hadley, you can put the, could you, or whoever's controlling, put the map back up real quick? And as you see on that one right there, that is...
That's the owners?
That's the one that was kind of an oddball in that...
Right, as you can see, I visited with the former Planning Commission Chairman, been here for a number of years, and there was no real reason, those are all single-family homes in that particular block.
I was just going to say, that's all residential right there, in a commercial...
We have it zoned as commercial, and no one really knew why, and so that block of owners wanted to come back in.
That's around in the Players Club?
No, this is, this is down on Ballard, behind the old Creamery there.
Oh, got it, okay.
And in the other map, if you want to scroll back to that, thank you, just, is, Players is directly west of that, and those are vacant lots right now, they're all the vacant lots just east of the parking lot that exists on the east side of Players. Our, we're going to the R2 medium-density, because as you can see, that's a darker yellow color, it's kind of our buffer zone between commercial and single-family residential. And they actually want to construct single-family homes there.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Hadley? We'll go ahead and look at ordinance 1668, which is the rezone of lots 7, 8, and 9, on block 3 of the Houston addition, look for a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 1668.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second, any further discussion or questions? Any further discussion or questions? Very none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 1668. We'll move on to lots 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, 12, Block 18, Young's Fifth. Rezone ordinance 1669. Look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 1669.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Very none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 1669. We'll move right into the 520, and we have some abatements. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. This evening, we have before you two different townhouse projects that unfortunately had fire last year and had, had loss to these properties. One of the abatable reasons is for fire loss. Our inspection indicated that there was a total loss as of the date of fire for the Colonial Village condominiums that are located just north of the interstate on Sims. That loss occurred on February 28th of 2018. So we had 306 days of loss. We've calculated that out as 85%. So if you have the chart in front of you, if you don't, I can certainly, I brought extras. And we just show that the value's been decreased by 85%. That would be what the taxable value is payable here in 2019. And then the other properties were the country, were in the Country Oaks Estate subdivision located on 29th northwest of Runnings. They had 141 days of loss. That fire was on August 12th, and we had a total loss percentage of 40%. And I did call the property owners and let them know what the value was, how much loss we were giving them, that it was total loss. I didn't have anybody disagree with the changes that we were making at that time. And that's what we bring for you, is that the, the abated value that we'll change to would be in that debated value column. And it is a little bit different depending on the property. They might have a little bit of site underneath a little larger lot, maybe a few different amenities. So just a little bit of difference between some of these, but not a whole lot. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? Mr. Hirschfeld, you're looking for approval? You need a formal motion to enact these abatements?
That is correct. Like our other abatements, we're just looking for a motion to abate the values or correct the values to, to the abated column. With it being a total percentage, I think we can get it done in one motion, but we'll defer to Ms. Murtha and what her thoughts are on this. But I think we can do it in one, in one motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any question, any other questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? Going forward into 2019, that have the landowners contacted you? Are there any discussions, are they, what they're doing with the property?
Spoke to most of them. There's a lot of discussion going on. I don't think they've reached any sort of an agreement. Unfortunately, these were all insured as, as single properties instead of having an umbrella for, for all of them. And certainly, if you're in a similar project like this, maybe get with your neighbors to where they can all be rebuilt. Because the, from what I'm understanding, the, the payoffs from the insurance companies are different. Not everybody's getting the same amount of money back, making it difficult for them to work together to rebuild it. And so we're looking at, you know, maybe some vacant lots up until a group comes forward and purchases all of them, and looking to develop on that again. Just some of the, the questions and statements that have been brought to me. But I really don't have any clear guidance given to me on, on what will be happening to them.
I know the property is, they're sitting there, and they, at one point, something has to be done. So I'm sure you'll stay on top of that.
And my inspection occurred before cleanup, but I may be mistaken, but I think they've all been cleaned up, other than maybe there's some foundation still there on some of these. So it's not like we have a lot of debris still remaining. So, you know, at least that part's taken care of.
Okay, I'd look for a motion to approve these abatements.
Move to approve, as stated.
We have a motion to approve the abatements.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? Very none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right. The last item this evening will be the library expansion update from Bartlett and West. And we have Director Ennin. And, well, hopefully I pronounce this, Joe Larrabee?
Yes.
Okay, is he?
He is not here.
Okay.
That's, first say thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners, for your time this evening. Mr. Larrabee, due to some unforeseen complications, was not able to get here today. After all, but I am going to go ahead and walk you through the update of the current draft of the plans that we are looking at and that we are going to be taking forward to our public forums. And I do have those dates to share with you today as well. So, little hard to, hard to see, but hopefully if I can make the pointer work. So this first, these plans are on at three levels. And so this end over here, of course, is the existing building. And over here is the area where the ark was. Okay. So we start here, and there is quite a bit of renovation in the current building that is part of these plans too. So I'm, we're going to show it to you level by level, is, is the intention. So starting on the lowest level, where right now, let's see if I can make this work. This is where the current children's story room is. The intention is that that's going to be moved all the way over here, where adult nonfiction is now. Have an area that will be large enough to have those groups of kids coming in. We're excited about the addition of some child-sized restrooms over here, something that the building does not have at this point in time. And while we're doing that, then we'll flip around the teen area all the way to over here, giving them a space that has a little bit of definition and puts them not right in the middle of the little kids. And the only area that's new will be over here, under where the current bookmobile garage is. There is, there's some mechanical space there. Those restrooms are there. I'm not working this pointer very well, but, and a staff meeting and workroom. It's also planned to move the children's programming office here and the circulation area here, which gives it a pretty good sightline going both directions down the building. And then to put a foundation and friends office in where the current children's librarians is. Over in, this would be a basement then, over in the new addition. Their first plans and drafts that some of you will have seen did not have any basement there. But there'd been discussion, and, and we went back and said, we'd like to see what that would look like. You can't decide to put in a basement after you've built, right? So right now, that area is showing primarily storage and mechanical. But there is one area of it, particularly down here, that we are in talks with Dickinson State University about the possibility of some of their art equipment, such as their darkroom in particular, that used to be out south of Ballard. That does not have a home at this moment. And the intention would be that they could use that for classes here, but then it could also be used by the public and for a public kind of a maker space geared towards adults. It would be something really pretty unique among libraries, certainly in North Dakota. So that's that level. You want to do questions level by level or at the end? Well, keep going. Okay, so this is the current level of the library up to right here. And the rest of this is the extension going on across. So the way the plans look at this point in time, and these are not final, but the bookstore has been suggested could go right down here on this end. This is the original Carnegie entrance, which there will be no change to that at all. On the national register, very important that we don't do that. Currently, we have a, a small meeting room and by office here. But the intention, or this, the plan as it's drawn right now, would be in this area where the bookmobile garage is now, to put a suite of offices back there, along with some workspace that could be shared potentially between our li, our staff and the friends of the library. That would also then move the circulation desk right here to the center once again. So right in line with the front doors and a good line of sight going down both directions of where collections are. This plan does bump out that front entrance, putting in a two-door vestibule sort of entry there and places for possibly some public computers and seating. And if we, we put in a coffee cart, which some people are excited about, that is the area at this point in time where we're showing that anyway. This also shows a walkway that goes all the way through here. So it does bring in the, the back wall of the community room just a little bit. So that's showing where that is, and then the walkway through. This area right here is what is currently staff parking. This has some area for increased shelving for our fiction collection, which is bursting out of his shelves. And it also has then kind of an atrium entryway here. In this plan right here, and right here is where the doors would be. That would be so that the collections area of the library could be closed while the rest of this is still able to be used after hours or on weekends. Then going down to the newest, the new proposed addition to the library, bookmobile garage then would go out over here. This is a tiered auditorium, seating for about 120. And it goes up to the second level. So where there where it says storage, that's going underneath of the seats that are going up actually. And that would be the entrance way through to the bookmobile. And then we have down here two maker space rooms. That's where we've talked about having the area for steam programs and Lego clubs and all of those busy, messy things, if you will. So a place with no carpet, obviously, and some built-in cabinetry and things that would facilitate that. It is shown at this point in time or on this draft with a removable wall so that you could open that up and have a large room there if it's needed. Then going on to the third story, it's really a third story over the new addition. Whoops, went back. Here we go. And a mezzanine up on this part. So this is looking out over where the entrance is down here. Some seating, little bit of shelving for, we would anticipate things like coffee table books and, and oversized collections and that sort of thing. And then you'd see out into main part of the library. One of the big changes, I didn't point out on the earlier slides, but I'll show it to you here. We are talking about doing that change, sorry, so that there's a through-way stairwell that goes all the way up and down, connecting all three levels at this point on either side of that elevator. Then you come out here, we have some small study rooms. I'd love to see one of those be a smart meeting room. And over here, then, on what would be getting to where it is a second level, the adult nonfiction and some more seating areas. Come over into the new area of the library. This is showing then that second level with the rest of the tiered seating. It is shown with a large platform area here, such that wheelchairs and other seating of that sort could go there. Has a little A/B room. And then over on this side, some staff office space. And what can be one or two rooms that would be for historical collections and that sort of thing, but also gallery space. So we could bring in things like the exhibits from the State Historical Society and those sorts of things. Go here, and these are just some little views from the outside to give you an idea of what it might look like. Over here in this corner, this is looking at the bookmobile garage, where it would come out towards the street. And so this is kind of looking through into where the auditorium would be. This is looking along at what is now the Friends Plaza entrance. And showing, of course, with that wall and that space extended out. And then this looking the long way all along. And these are just some interior shot mockups so that you can see what the new section could look like. So here showing that entrance area with seating. And here showing the mezzanine. This, a little shot of what would be or could be the auditorium. And here, the maker rooms if it was opened up into one large space. Then the next thing we have are some concept ideas, two of them at this point, for the outside. And one of the things we had talked about with the architect is that we'd like to see that be some usable space during the seasons. It's possible to do that too. We already do some things on the plaza outside. And so they've shown us some pretty simple concepts of what you could do to make this into areas where you could do programming. So teaching and reading hills, and possibly do some lighting and other things like that. At the public forums, we are hoping to have several different kinds of things there for people to react to if we would decide to do this. And this is showing then on the bottom there, the long plaza, how that would be. So this is the areas where they're showing the seating at, and showing it from a top view. And here's a few more shots just to give you an idea of what that might look like at night. And with some interesting seating and some of the other things that we'll show to the forums. And the other concept that has been put out there right now would be that we don't change it at all. We just extend the existing landscaping all the way down to the end of the building. My staff is going to make the argument that we do not want brick out there. The current brick has issues with it. It's not maintaining its condition very well, and it is frequently icy. But if we did decide to try to do something that just mirrored what their existing is, that's what that look is meant to be. And then I'd like to just tell you, we have planned at this point in time, three public forums. An early morning and an evening forum on Wednesday, February 27th. And a Saturday morning on March 2nd. Our intention with those different times and dates to be, make it convenient for as many people as possible. This time, I would be happy to answer any questions and would love to hear your comments. I hope that some of you might decide to come to one of our public forums, but for sure, we want to hear what you think. What?
I think you see us all putting it in our calendar. So.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Ennin?
What's your expected cost for renovation in new?
I do not have that at this time. I have talked with Joe about it. He felt that, first of all, he wants to address it himself personally. And secondly, that there are still a few things that are enough influx in our plan that he didn't feel real comfortable giving a number.
Thank you.
I do expect by the public forums for that to be available. Or shortly after.
Any other questions for Ms. Ennin?
Looks amazing.
Looks really good.
Thank you.
Yeah, looks great. Excited.
Okay, thank you. And so just to let all of you know too, if you have feedback for me, please. We're hoping that you and obviously all of our public will make it a point to give their feedback and make these their plans, not just ours. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we've gone over public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. But like I said, there's been some additions since we went over that. If anybody would like to come forward with any city concern not on the agenda, please come forward.
Since it's my third opportunity, I better come now. I'm Dr. Paula Martin, and I am president of the Library Board. And I wanted to publicly say, or to command. president of the Library Board. And I wanted to publicly say or to commend and thank Rita Ennin and her staff for the wonderful things that they do at the library. But I also want to stress that the expansion is greatly needed. They're kind of busting out their seams right now in terms of staff space and programming possibilities. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Rita, and also, please, support this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, Commissioners, one last time, you have anything? Not, look for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
A second.
We have a motion to adjourn and second. We are adjourned.